You can't really do anything wrong as long as you don't try to travel with it. You know what I mean?
Yes.
All right, ready to go then? All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, October the 8th. Division of modifications or changes.
Any motions on the floor to have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? Mr. Davis, you have an internal budget revision?
Yes, sir. There's only, excuse me, one internal budget revision for the council's consideration. Sheriff Curtis Keller's requested that he be allowed to reduce line 222 dues and subscription, and this is for the Department 760 ammo control, be allowed to reduce line 222 dues and subscriptions by $12. Current unencumbered fund balance is $500 with nothing spent to date, and increase line 230 contractual services by $12. That account currently has a deficit balance of $11.08, and that's due to correct the deficit balance that was caused by code error.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the internal budget revision for Mr. Davis? Changes status, we have a change of status received from the Honorable Larry Hess Assessor for Rhonda Loudon. She will be Assistant Field Supervisor. Her salary will increase from $42,000, $4 to $43,000 effective July 1st, 2020. Letter resignation received from the Assessor's Office for Sarah B. Hahn effective October 2nd, 2020. Letter resignation received from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for Harley Stakers effective October 16th, 2020. Letter resignation received from the Homeland Security Emergency Management for Caitlin Price effective October 16th, 2020. That's the assistant, right?
He's actually going back to.
Okay. Letter resignation received from the Central Dispatch for Dolores Vander, Van Devenner, I'm sorry, effective October 1st, 2020. Letter resignation received from IT for Dina.
It's got some names to deal with today, don't you?
And I didn't have time to ask for explanation of the pronunciation, effective October 5th, 2020. Letter resignation received from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for Amber Miller effective October 16th, 2020.
You did that one real well, buddy.
Thank you, that's difficult. All right, any questions on the changes status? We have the minutes, Vice President Delia was not present for September 24th, 2020. Any changes or corrections? If not, I would like to have a motion.
Mr. President, I agree with you. The September 24th, 2020.
Second, have a motion for a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I abstain from voting.
County calendar calendars will be closed on Monday, the 12th, this coming Monday, and it will be back in the chambers at 8:30 on Thursday, the 15th. 1pm Board of Assessments Appeals, any questions on that one?
Are they planning on doing away with Columbus Day? I think they were talking about removing the statue or something.
Who knows? Tonight, we have Boards of Commissions, we have the Fire Board here in the chambers at 8pm. Monday, the 12th, we have a 5pm Water District, 6pm Fireman Protection Tuesday, the 13th, 2pm Central Dispatch Advisory Board, and Wednesday, the 14th, 9:30am Development Authority, 1pm Historic Landmarks, and 6pm Roundhouse Authority. Any changes or corrections on those? We have a revised Brooklyn County Council of West Virginia Citizens Participation Plan. Any questions on that one?
We need to update this because.
Yes.
Alright, ready to go then? Alright. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, October the eighth, if there's any modifications or changes.
Any questions on the floor to have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? Mr. Davis, you have an internal budget revision?
Yes, sir, there's only, excuse me, one internal budget revision for the council's consideration. Sheriff Curtis Keller has requested that he be allowed to reduce line two twenty-two dues and subscription, and this is for the Department seven sixty AM control. Be allowed to reduce line two twenty-two dues and subscriptions by twelve dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is five hundred dollars with nothing spent to date. An increased line two thirty contracted services by twelve dollars. That account currently has a deficit balance of eleven dollars and eight cents. And that's due to correct the deficit balance that was caused by coding error.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the internal budget revision for Mr. Davis? Changes status, we have a change of status received from the Honorable Larry Hess Assessor for Rhonda Loudon. She will be Assistant Field Supervisor. Her salary will increase from forty-two thousand four dollars to forty-three thousand effective July first, two thousand twenty. Letter resignation received from the Assessor's Office for Sarah Behan, effective October the second, two thousand twenty. Letter resignation received from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for Harley Staggers, effective October sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Letter resignation received from the Homeland Security Emergency Management for Caitlin Price, effective October sixteen, two thousand twenty. That's the assistant. Right. Okay. Letter resignation received from the Central Dispatch for Dolores Vander Van Devener, I'm sorry, effective October first, two thousand twenty. Letter resignation received from IT for Dina.
It's got some names to deal with today, don't you?
And I didn't have time to ask for explanation of the pronunciation, effective October fifth, two thousand twenty. Letter resignation received from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for Amber Miller, effective October sixteenth, two thousand twenty.
You did that one real well, by the way.
Thank you, it's difficult. Alright, any questions on the changes status? We have the minutes, Vice President Delia was not present for September twenty-four, two thousand twenty. Any changes or corrections? If not, I would like to have a motion. Second, have a motion for a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
abstained from voting.
County calendar calendars will be closed on Monday, the twelfth, this coming Monday. And it will be back in the chambers at nine thirty on Thursday, the fifteenth, one P M, Board of Office Inspection of Ballots and Voting Machines. Two eight P M, Board of Assessment Appeals. Any questions on that one?
Are they planning on doing away with Columbus Day? I think they were talking about removing his statue or something.
Tonight, we have Boards of Commission, we have the Fire Board here in the chambers at eight P M. Monday, the twelfth, we have a five P M Water District, six P M Fireman Protection. Tuesday, the thirteenth, two P M Central Dispatch Advisory Board. And Wednesday, the fourteenth, nine thirty A M Development Authority, one P M Historical Amarks, and six P M Roundhouse Authority. Any changes or corrections on those? We have a revised Brooklyn County Council of West Virginia Citizens Participation Plan. Any questions on that one?
And we need to update it because of submitting that CBV application that we had the first public hearing on last week. For where we're going to be applying for some sort of order of funding for health and park. So this is just updating the policy that's in place to work with that grant.
Where does this policy hit with the other orders and stuff like that? Is it John Smalls?
Well, it's valid, it's part of the court's office.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Remove.
Second.
That's been made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Barnhart, Board of Meeting reports.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. The only meeting I had was in the Home Consortium of West Virginia, which was by Zoom, but I attended it with Phil Park in his office. We zoomed out to the other participants. It was actually, it was the meeting that was, I guess it was in August. That we could have forum for, so continuation of that. The only really interesting thing was lot twenty-one of, who was that subject?
Timberwark? Yeah, Timberwark.
Alberta. They had found somebody else had buried a load of shingles, and which had asbestos in it. And we decided to remediate the asbestos, to go ahead and build the house.
Oh, yeah.
And other than that, it was just reports and stuff like that.
Right, okay, Ms. Smalls?
That being the end of the month, we didn't have regular meetings. However, at the Roundhouse, that was Kirkland who has worked on his master's degree in reservation. And our blacksmith shop is very bleak and void of a lot of posters and things. And he also has worked for the National Park Service. So for his master's degree, he has that project. He is going to fix it up so it looks like the National Park Service, as far as the posters, job descriptions, and all that kind of thing.
Where did you get the message from, West Virginia or Chappersville?
From Charles Town.
Oh, the A P U?
American U, yeah. And so we have, it's kind of a project we've been trying to get to, but didn't have anybody had a lot of expertise, and he's gonna.
Those were speeches.
Yes, and also working with public awareness that helps develop a video which goes with the website. So it's oncoming. The second thing, working with the Roundhouse, we had a lot of, several weddings this week, they've been interesting the last two weeks. And the restrooms on the punch out, we thought everything was finished, but we sent somebody in to clean the bathrooms, and there was no mop sink. No spigot. The only thing they had was a little spigot that, you know, the water comes up, you can't get glass of water out of. So everything on the.
You're not supposed to get water out of the mop sink, you're not supposed to get a glass of water out of the mop sink.
I'm talking about, we couldn't even get a glass of water out of the sinks that we have, and then we had, they had to have somebody in there cleaning it. So the, a lot of people, contractors and all those folks were upset this week when we stopped everything for the final checks. And it's amazing, it's on the punch out list for next week. And it's just amazing, so it's been an interesting week. So, and then one last thing is, please be updated and stay tuned. They're looking again at Route Nine, and they had a public meeting this past week on.
There's a big traffic count right now. I mean, traffic counts everywhere on Route Nine and Drive On Road, what's happening, and every, Route Nine's so busy that Drive On Road is, traffic is crazy. So at least they're catching it from all different directions.
Well, thank God Route forty-five is not crazy yet. Shepherd being.
Right, right.
Well, the other thing is, we have a lot of existing situations. We have five to six, I believe, farmland protection properties down there right along the creek. Plus, we have, I think there was a couple other issues that was, oh, some expansion that some people are looking at, the LCS wants to expand. So it's a lot of things in the mix that, from what I understand, a city east of us is looking to expand moving their trash this direction. So there's a lot of things in the mix.
Last week you said something about the, what's the fruit building?
Fruit exchange, yes, sir.
That's owned by CSX, the building itself?
Yes, the land. So they were already accepted the fact they're going to clean it up.
Really, really?
The building, okay, according to nineteen twenty-two, originally the contract, Matt can correct me if I'm wrong. The contract was done with the Fruit Growers Association to put that up there, and I don't believe they were to have sold it or anything. So whatever happened, going down the road was not properly handled, and everything had to be with a proper lease with the B N O. And there was no leases except that original. The other thing, last week you asked about checking on the roof of the Roundhouse. We've had someone go through and check on the roof. Right now, we're getting the windows checked on, because that's also part of the structure of the peak of the roof, stressed, so we're checking on all that.
But the windows wouldn't be structural, but it's the truss, the truss, it's not the actual roof itself, it's the truss, remember?
Right.
Inside the building.
Right. Okay, so we're working on getting some of those done. We've gotten one part of it done, we've got a couple other parts to get done.
Vice President?
I didn't have any actual board meetings. We did have a bid opening yesterday at the airport for one of the, one of the construction projects from the purchase that we're getting ready to do to refit for Air Meds to move over to the other hangar. And there was a question during that, had a conversation with John Dick about it. One contractor added in a cost to put double five-eighths drywall on top of the half-inch drywall that was already there because the fire separation, they said wasn't correct. And hopefully John is right. I talked to John, and this whole building's sprinkled. So being a sprinkled building, he said that half-inch drywall was fine on both sides. Hopefully that'll save us forty thousand dollars by doing that, so.
Alright, Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir, I have a planning commission meeting on Monday. Council President was in attendance to verify a public comment that was made by a gentleman wanting to ask for the resignation of one of our council planning commission members. Anyway, it was his impersonal agenda on that, I think. And I just started handing out some campaign information, and I asked him if he knew he was a violation of the county campaign laws of producing or distributing campaign literature on county property. He took it back, and he said he was coming into this, and I haven't seen him, but he does, I'm sure he'll have questions for other comments. And second, I attended the COVID testing up at Mountain Ridge Middle. And two of our county employees were there, Randy Lilly and Eddie Okunhar. It was being put on by Shenandoah Health in conjunction with the D H H R. And good thing Randy and Eddie were there, because they needed a lot of help with some traffic control. Eddie called me a little bit later, and offered to bring up a light plant, because they were there, we were there until almost nine o'clock last night.
Is that right?
Yeah, testing over three hundred people came through that line that we had tested. And I was one of them. Yeah, I think she was scratching the back of my eyeball with that. Took care of that, though.
Yeah.
Other than that, it was all good.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't have any scheduled board meetings this past week, but Councilperson Whitaker stated I was at the planning commission meeting on Monday night just to give a couple viewpoints to some of the people. Pretty calm, wasn't a big deal, I was on the radio the next day talking about the same issue.
Got to listen in a little bit of it.
Yes, yeah, somebody pretty much using the planning commission for their platform.
And you know, I think the, and I got obviously the email as well, and I think the conversation, you know, I thought about it when I was reading that. And I think that if I was sitting on the Development Authority or the Planning Commission, I think that people may say the same thing about me, that I'm not capable of giving representation for the citizens in a, in a, on a Development Authority or, what am I talking about? The homeowner association. But I have served as president on four and currently serve as president on two different ones, you know? I've been involved in those for at least fifteen years that I've been actively involved in them. So I think that, I think that just because you're not a chosen homeowner sitting on it, does not mean that you can't do what we do and still be able to represent the people in one of those meetings.
I'm gonna add just one thing to it, is from what I understand, and what has been proven to me, it's not that, it's not, this gentleman is not representing a HOA association. He's just representing a person that is affiliated or lives in HOA supplement, that's it, that's a big difference.
Right, right, and that's my point.
And I don't, you know, I don't think, I don't think he would be endorsed by HOA or the whole HOA.
No, but I also thought that there is an organization, association, each campaign thing, a home owners association, that may be a good foot for him to start, because they did have a conversation person in Charleston during legislation.
They have an actual lobbyist, yes, they do.
And that would be the better, be better off.
No, 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 it's just, okay, alright. Board and commission vacancies, any activity there?
Yes, sir. I would like to appoint Karen Burkhardt to the Brooklyn County Farmland Protection, and her term of office will be October nineteenth of twenty twenty, October eighteenth of twenty twenty.
Alright, second question, it made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I think she's a very good choice, by the way.
Oh, yes, credentials fully great.
Is there a term limit?
Yes, you can do two terms. And on the other side of that, she's replacing Barbara Bertina, and I'd like to send her a thank you. She served two terms.
Okay, alright, thank you, Ms. Smalls, any other activity? Alright, next on our agenda is Tim Zaya, Community Correction Director, Recovery Service, and Homeland Confinement Update.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Tim, how you doing?
Tim, provide a brief report to you regarding the Day Report Center Home Confinement Program Recovery and Support Center. Day Report Center first month of September, we serve a total of two hundred and twenty-three participants. We currently have an active roster of two hundred and six, which is thirty-six higher than it was back when our numbers dropped significantly due to closure and so forth. So we're steadily climbing again. The recruitment for full-time therapists and part-time therapists, as a result of our discretionary funding request lineup, was completed. We now have a full-time master's level clinician on staff, part-time master's level clinician on staff. So we have a therapist there from eight A M to eight P M, Monday through Thursday, and eight A M to five P M. That's pretty huge for us, now that they're on board, we can begin to fill their, fill their caseload of people that do not have a head degree. Such a big win, very happy about that. Every October is when I run our recidivism numbers. Last October, we had, at that point, one hundred and twenty-two graduates, and our recidivism rate was twenty-four percent, program graduates. I'll be running those numbers again this month. Next time I come to you, you'll report, I'll have our current recidivism rate. We have fifty-eight more graduates now than we did last year. For a total of, what is that, fifty-eight and twenty-two?
One eighty.
There you go. Those fifty-eight graduates, this is just a point of interest, those fifty-eight graduates have been in our program for a minimum of twelve months. Some of them more than that, but a minimum of twelve months. Just those fifty-eight people represent a jail savings of one million twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars, just those fifty of them.
And you got two hundred and thirty-six right now.
I'm sorry.
And you have two hundred and thirty-six currently.
Yes, and that jail savings doesn't take into account the immeasurable other ways that, I can't even describe, these are people that are still with their families, they're working, they're paying taxes. They're free, I'll be making predictions that they were once, anyhow, that's a big number. So Day Report Center, we continue to, we're doing business as usual, we're doing well, we're forthcoming again, as they were pre-probable, pleased with that. Home confinement program, there's currently seventy-nine under supervision, twenty pending cases. Again, I don't have anything significant to report to you regarding home confinement, our program is just operating smoothly.
When you say twenty pending cases, that means twenty additional?
There are twenty people who have already received referrals before, so when a referral comes in, the home confinement officers do a home study. They go and visit the residents where the person indicates they're going to be living, and then make sure that they have running water and electricity. Make sure the home is free of firearms, illegal substances, alcohol. Make sure that anyone who's living there is willing to comply with the terms of home confinement and understand that home business can be performed at any time, so it just can be conducted at any time. There are some times when there's a spouse or a parent that says, no, I'm not willing to allow for that, and the residence is found to be unsuitable. Or there's residences that don't have electricity and don't have plumbing, so they're found to be unsuitable for that, but general residences are. Referrals have been received, the home studies have been done, and we're waiting for a court date for that person to be sentenced. So there's twenty-four in the pipeline. But every month, there are people who, whose sentences expire, there are people who are arrested, so referrals come in. Old ones go out, kind of thing, so the number gets steady for a while.
That's a very good explanation, by the way.
Thank you. The number is twenty eighteen, we started this program in twenty eighteen. That calendar year, we received seventy-five thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars in payments, jail savings. Jail cost would have been, had those folks been incarcerated, one million one hundred and six thousand eighty-three dollars. In twenty nineteen, we received ninety-five thousand eighty-eight dollars in payments, jail cost would have been one million three hundred and ninety-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. This year, January first to date, we received sixty-one thousand seven dollars in payments, jail cost.